Okay, we're gonna call the meeting order.
As required by the Urban Public Meetings Act of nineteen seventy-five, at a quick notice, this meeting was provided on January ninth, two thousand twenty-five by notice, the express time, from the Hunter County Democrat, and by posting said notice in the missile building on the same day.
Here.
Mister Baylor.
Here.
Mister Bean.
Here.
Mister Kenny.
Here.
That's McDermott here, Mister Lambert.
Your rise for the flag.
My pleasure, Agent.
Thank you.
Welcome, everybody. Good for exciting night, at least the first ten minutes. Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Good for exciting night, at least the first ten minutes. Okay, so the Environmental Committee wants to make some award some certificates for the essay contest, so Barry and Mister faith will be there.
Thank you very much, Mayor. My name is Barry Glassman with the Greenwich Township Environmental Committee. And Mister Vetrison, Bob Vetrison, is our chairperson. Each year, as many of you know, and we really appreciate it, the Environmental Committee gets to celebrate, recognize birthday, April twenty-second, by launching an essay contest with the seventh grade science class. I think we're around twenty years doing this. And this year, we had approximately sixty students. In January, we launched an essay contest, approximately sixty students participated. And the, the theme or the question of the year had to do with protecting our waterways, but more specifically, what happens when a drop of rain lands, let's say, on the roof of your house, rolls down, makes it through the spout to the grass, or whatever, maybe it's a driveway, and rolls down, eventually getting to a stormwater drain in the street, maybe? And where does it continue? Probably to a creek, probably then to a river, and eventually theoretically into an ocean, a bigger body of water. And then again, we think of it as that water evaporates and it starts all over again. But in that process, that drop of water is probably picking up contaminants. And the goal was to raise the awareness with our students as to what do we do to help that water be protected? Right? How do you stop all those contaminants from getting into the water supply? Into the ocean, rivers, creeks, where we have wildlife, or life growing in there? So we have to protect our waterways. A number of our students were very astute and took it even broader and focused on researching watersheds, which is basically what we were talking about. And doing that research to talk about not just that one drop of water in their yard and their stormwater drain, but the area, the territory that we live in, what are we doing to help protect all that land and animals, et cetera? So we were very impressed that the science teacher, Tracy Simmons, and the students really took it to that next level. And we got a bunch of essays. And today, we're fortunate that we have two of the three winners here. Our, our number one winner, her fam- her family, they're on a vacation. So unfortunately, we're going to miss them today, miss her today. Iluxi Bahavzar and her family as number one. But we hope to bring them here next month, if that's okay. But we do have two lucky winners here today, and they both said they have their speeches prepared, they'll keep it under their hands now. And we'd like to now make a presentation, but Bob, did you want to say anything else about the contest or?
I think the driving force for this from our art end is to try and excite in the students, or maybe set off a little spark that they're gonna remember and keep remembering, so that when they get older, they may think about that as a career, like environmental science, or science, or whatever. This happened with me when I was in grammar school. You've probably never heard of it, but Sputnik went up and the Russians left us flat in space, and the government got all uppity about it, and they start shipping books around, and we had specials teachers come around to talk to us about science, and it sparked the interest in science that's carried me through my whole life. And we're hoping the same thing happens. So, so thank you all for participating, and I hope you learned something. And maybe I hope you learned something that you may want to pursue.
Okay, thanks, Bob. So our number three winner, we're gonna start with. This winner, so our audience and people may be watching here. This individual focused on protecting the water, but being careful not to clear off too much land, to keep trees, and have smart land development. Which, so who knows, maybe there's a future land use board member here. So smart land development, very important, right? So our number three winner is Samantha Watke, or Sammy. So congratulations. And we're gonna make a presentation with the mayor, if we are able to, and your family and friends are gonna take pictures. Come on up, I think we do it this way, right? Here's, you get this. And Sammy wins a fifty-dollar gift card to Target. There we go.
All right.
Thank you. All right, and our number two winner focused on protecting the waterways along the banks, riparian buffers. We got another person who did the research and focused on things that we're concerned about here as a township, as environmentalists. We do care about planting trees and not cutting trees down along waterways, and making sure that water that's gonna wind up in a stream, or creek, or river, gets filtered by roots and, and the grasses, everything there. So definitely protecting the waterways, so number two is Ariana Años. And Ariana, you win a seventy-five-dollar gift certificate to Target, that's gonna be a fun trip.
You can get all candy.
Congratulations. Thank you again for the time and allowing us to do this.
Anytime for you guys, you do a great job, and we appreciate all you do for the township, Barry and Mister Vetrison, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a time when you can run through your life if you so choose. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes in the special budget meeting on March tenth, and the regular meeting on March twentieth. Anybody wanna make that motion? Anybody want a second? Anybody have any comments, corrections, deletion?
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Kenny?
Yeah.
Mister McDermott?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to accept the treasurer's report, the April bill list, and the interim bill list from I'll make that motion, anybody want a second? If they have any questions in any form?
I do have just a couple of questions. Pre-employment background investigation, and we have anything?
Yeah, you've, you've got a couple of questions.
Okay, all right. Online investigative services, well, April first, three slash three, twenty-one hundred dollars, what was that for?
I don't know.
I will have to pull the purchase order.
I would assume it's a
I think it's that system, isn't it?
Is it the whole system?
I think, I think it's like the subscription or whatever, maybe for the year.
All right.
Does that sound right?
That's usually good, like the credit rating and stuff, but.
Okay. And just on the recreation, Brian, we got lacrosse helmets at four thousand forty-nine dollars, and hats for recreation at forty-nine hundred. Is that expensive, or do we have that many more?
Everything's one-off in price, the helmets, they get every couple of years, they have to, that's a safety standard that they have to abide by. Which they do do, Lacrosse is a nice fundraiser that fits like half of that, get back, yeah, that's how much.
And the hats are with baseball hats and softball hats?
Yeah, it's the hats.
Okay.
For the kids.
Helmet, if you insist, I'll have to say.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure the insurance company too is wanting to know how often we play.
No, they, they check them out, they get anything checked up here, so it's like football.
Okay, that's it. Any males? Roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenny?
Yes.
Mister McDermott?
Yes.
Putting for a motion to accept the tax collector's tax and sewer reports for March, anybody wanna make that motion?
Make it.
Anybody want a second? Anybody have any questions, comments on that report? Roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yeah.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenny?
Yes.
Mister McDermott?
Yes.
Okay, Police Department report, anybody have anything that they want to bring up with the chief, he's not here yet, so.
They were busy.
Do you want to circle around?
No, they're busy, they've doubled.
Well, I mean, for the month, okay?
They doubled the summonings.
Yeah, right, and, and the warnings, there were three hundred and fifteen warnings last
They're busy.
month compared to only a hundred and sixty-five, so like it's double, so.
Well, I think it comes down to a matter of vacation, sick, arrhythmia, you know what I mean, like.
Right, right, right. Right, I'm just thinking, that's a lot of warnings, so I guess a lot of people are having getting warnings instead of taking, you know, so. It probably keeps a cool cost down, but.
A lot of fixed costs there.
Yeah.
DPW, anybody have any questions, comments on that report?
That's one, Joe's not here. They've done a great job with Stecker, baseball field. It's like minor league stadium, right, they've really done, yeah, Joe's put, you know, he's much of those classes, he's put like a conditioner on top, and it looks like a major league stadium, like, yeah, he's done a really good job.
Well, and we, over the last few years, we've gotten the right equipment to, to do it, too.
Yeah.
It's a combination of everything.
Go up there when you go by.
In other words, we don't have chain link fence with block.
We do not have chain link fence with blocks dragging it anymore.
Yeah.
Hey Paul, I remember that technology. Paul, the DPW, have they started, I don't know about the markers for the parking lot extension with Santini? Has he mentioned?
No, he has not talked to me, we haven't talked about it of late, I can certainly find out.
Find out, she said, oh, I know where the markers are, I'm gonna draw a line.
Yeah.
Bob Santini stopped it.
Just draw a straight line.
Yeah.
Okay, you can get more.
Okay. I think with DPW, I guess I'll bring it up now, we got an email from a concerned citizen regarding a lawn doctor, does do spraying, Thomas Stewart Park, and we're in any signs to warn that it was done like within twenty-four hours. So Paul and Joe already work, they're gonna work out with communications with lawn doctor. They give a seventy-two hour notice, we might need more than seventy-two hour notice when they're gonna do it.
Okay.
And then we're gonna have to start working with Rick to schedule games, and probably have to get some type of signs to let people know that it's been treated. But Paul had said they're maybe doing it sectioned, so that you don't have to shut the whole.
Yeah, otherwise you got to shut the whole park down for three days.
It's been that long?
Well, it the rule is three days, it doesn't need to be thirty days, but that's the rule. You know, really twenty-four hours is more than sufficient.
Nothing.
Once the product's dry, you're able to walk on it safely, not be concerned. The next morning would do it, sometimes reactivates it. In this particular situation, we had, it was done, right, and had wind out afterwards, so it stayed dry all through the night and never reactivated or anything. There's a few communication things that we need to work out, and then work out a schedule so that we don't have to shut the whole park down for three days, or even Thomas, or Stecker, Stecker Field and such. You know, otherwise, it'll become a dandelion field and no time flat, and, you know, we've got really nice looking park right now, we don't want to just let it go to weeds. But there's, there was a kink in the armor here, but it was really a communication thing. I do want to point out that the products that the lawn doctor use, any reputable company uses are safe and not toxic. But there are just rules for the application, and we just need to get a little bit better about following it, that's all.
So can he change that electronic sign that we have there now? I don't know how long that's gonna be up for. That's one option.
Oh, that is certainly one option.
And the second option is, maybe it's time that we discuss with the Open Space Committee, that we buy our own site.
Right.
Because we can use it up there, we can bring it down.
I'll be right.
The police could use.
So.
It would be awesome.
Yeah, yeah, no, there's a couple of options that are out.
They have the money.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how much a sign would cost, but I think.
I thought we decided.
No, sixteen seven, sixteen seven.
Sixteen thousand seven hundred? I thought earlier this year, we had actually bought one in the budget, we decided we could take some clean communities, some open space, and something else. And between the three entities, I thought we had set aside enough money to buy one electronic board.
Did that get mixed?
I don't think we ever, yeah, I think that got mixed at the end, because.
All right.
So.
So this time, they're gonna buy a hundred percent of the open space, don't have to worry about.
Yeah, right.
We'll bring that up in the next.
Okay.
This is open space, I mean, the wreck can use that sign.
We use a lot.
Right.
We prefer to stay in the open, whatever.
Yep, yep.
So. For show, all right. That'd be great. I'll talk to that chairman tonight, or tomorrow morning. Okay, clerk's office. Do you see if any ad from written report, anybody have any questions, comment?
Any questions?
Oh, I got one. How are we doing on the the dioxin contamination? What's, what's our next step? And.
Yeah.
There's a memo in your packets tonight that Attorney Laboring has renewed the contract.
Okay.
Whenever you guys are ready to act on that. I don't know if Mike.
Yeah, it looks pretty standard, I mean, it's a million, over a million dollars, so.
So we're.
We're gonna have the bond for the million, and then they'll reimburse it, and the good news is, Bryce and I have talked about this, they're, they've got the same contract in Franklin, so their office is familiar with it, but it's just, you know, there's a lot of, before we do X, we gotta get there, you know, so I just kind of listed all the things we have to be concerned about, but it's pretty straightforward.
What do we need to do today, anything?
Well, I, I think we probably, before we sign that, we probably have to get the bond ordinance drafted, and, you know, so.
Next meeting?
Yeah.
So I'll contact John Dragoits.
Yeah.
Bryce, have they put any shovels in the ground over on the Franklin side? I mean, I see the pipe sitting up there.
They have not yet, no, it's scheduled to start next week or the week after.
And how long is that project expected to last in Franklin?
For construction purposes? Yes, I don't know if Montana gave us a timeframe on that, but I can't imagine it's, it, they'll be done by the end of summer, I can't, I don't see why not.
Well, the reason is, you know, obviously, we have to wait next month, but I know Montana's gonna want to bid on that, and I don't want it to be moved into another section in Jersey, if we're right in their backyard.
Yeah, no, it, it, this process is, is a little bit of time, you're, you're looking, I know it's only one line, but till we go through the entire process, as Mike laid out, you're probably not talking till next year.
Okay, all right.
This is not a quick
Yep.
Million dollars spent next week, it's and I'm gonna talk a little bit about when I get to my report, too.
Okay. And it. Zoning and code enforcement?
I don't.
We didn't get one.
Yeah, we don't have a report here.
Well, we just got a lot of the state that we always see, right, the, the allegations, and.
Yeah, but I, I do know, I, I, I mean, I briefly stopped in to see Jeff on a weekly basis, and if, if you walk through the office, you can see there's a stack of papers there, you know, stuff's going on, he's busy.
Okay. Court report. Oppressing individual.
Very.
ACO. Hey, there's a lot of cats on Rick line, bro.
There is a problem up on Rick line.
Did she come out with snakes? I didn't know that. What's a snake doing? How did he get up in the attic, doesn't it?
Well, at all, but.
Yeah. I didn't know she did that.
Well, maybe she didn't do it, maybe she just spent time talking to him.
I'm surprised to see it, too.
I mean, there is a venomous snake hotline, with state, we'll send somebody out, if you have a venomous snake, but.
You're not allowed to kill them.
No, but they're come out, if you have venomous snake, go.
Yep.
If, you know, so.
Copperhead and rattlesnakes are protected.
Yep. So.
Okay.
Looking for a motion to accept the Police Department report, Department of Public Works report, Township Clerk's report, zoning code enforcement report, the court report, and ACO report for November the March.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, before we go? Roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenny?
Yes.
Mister McDermott?
Yes.
Committee for slowly, and you have anything?
I do have something, so, um, the point, yes. Luisa was on, I was hoping that Joe was, Luisa thought that they were going to be putting a walking path around back there, do we remember hearing anything about that?
Like over Thomas Stewart Park?
No, no, just like in front of like the games, and, I mean, the
Basketball?
Yeah, and all that. Plus, she said the benches, they said, are very close to where the new playground is. Can some of the benches be moved to, they were asking as well? Is that something we need to talk to Joe about?
Gravel, yeah, there, right, that's what he was talking about now.
I don't know if that's part of his, the new grant we're trying to get, you're gonna have to ask him, I don't know if that was part of the grant.
That was what I was hoping to ask him tonight about.
Because that was the lights, playground equipment, it might be that.
Because if Joe was sure, I thought, I would, now that you mention that. I noticed up at Lopat, all their benches, they do like a four-by-six cement channel. Put the benches on, one, I assume to bulk them down.
Right.
And two, that's gotta make it easier to mow around. I don't know how much that would add on to the cost of every bench they want to put in, but it's part of the problem that Joe doesn't care for benches, is because it's hard to, you have to weed whack, trim them down, or the mow around, which costs a lot of time. So is it more cost effective to look into that?
It, it's not really gonna change the, the easiness of the mow, you're weed whacking around a bench, or weed whacking around a concrete pad.
Oh, no, these are pretty big, they're square.
Yeah, no, but you're still gonna have to weed whack around the edges, yeah, you know, so you're not.
But the concrete square might be safer. The bench could be with uneven round around.
Sure. Sure, it's just something I noticed that they do, and I thought, you know, to me, it looks like it would be easier, because you don't have to weed whack once a month, probably, around that.
Probably.
You know, whereas if you let it grow around the legs and stuff.
Yeah, no, right.
It's probably more often. So.
Right, and that will distance it from.
But I don't know how much they're willing to spend, that could add quite a bit of money to build a four-by-six slap.
Well, yeah, it certainly does, right. Again, a conversation we can have with Joe and see what he thinks.
So, okay.
Otherwise, that was it.
Okay. Bill? The only thing Luisa and I discussed was the court, you know, the fees and whatnot, and she met with Scott, so I'm gonna.
Should we do that now, or should we do that in executive, as a contract?
Yeah, that's true, it is contract.
You could discuss it executive.
Just.
We'll do that in executive.
I do have it.
Yeah, you got it.
That it?
That's it.
Yeah, I have three things, three motions we have to make. All right, so recreation would like to hold the skills and drills for, I didn't give that age range, but it's gonna be geared towards the younger kids for basketball. The dates would be six fifteen to seven thirty-one, the end of July on Wednesday and Thursdays from five to six P M. And they're asking if they would be able to have the courts to host that, I did ask, can you use just half a court, they don't, depending on how many kids, they, they could probably accommodate on half, or they might need the whole thing.
How many times, use five to six?
Five to six, Wednesday and Thursday.
For how many weeks?
Six fifteen, that's the end of July.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So I'd make a motion that we allow recreation to block off and use on the basketball courts from six fifteen, that's seven thirty-one, from five to six P M.
One second, anybody have any questions, comments, discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenny?
Yes.
Mister McDermott?
Yes.
All right, second one, the Booster Club in Recreation want to hold their annual basketball camp. Times would be eight to the ball, six thirty to seven to rain date seven-three. So make a motion that we allow Booster Recreation to host their basketball camp from six thirty to seven-two with the rain date of seven-three from eight to twelve.
That's, I have a question. Promise? Roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenny?
Yes.
Mister McDermott?
Yes.
And last one, Recreation would like to hold their baseball and Booster, their baseball camp clinic from seven-seven to seven-nine at Beatty's Field with the rain date of seven-ten.
A second, anybody have any questions, comments on that? Roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenny?
Yeah.
Mister McDermott?
Yes.
That's it, yeah.
Paul, you have anything?
Now, just remember, the squad's got its annual flower and bake sale tomorrow, and Saturday.
No, I bet the flowers were really beautiful last year, really good quality of.
Well, we've got a local grower, and they've done a nice job, it's ten to six tomorrow, and I believe nine to whenever we run out on Saturday, usually by two or three, at the squad building.
What time does it start tomorrow?
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock, okay. Yeah, really good to.
Well, that, and with that being said, I know several of the Grange ladies are making pies. Bake Street on Main, from Phyllis Ferg, will also have a lot of product there. And then I know I've spent the last two days baking brownies. Squad building, and I'll be doing Toll House Cookies fresh tomorrow. And lots of other folks have dropped and stuff off, so.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. Professionals, Bryce?
A few items to go through, the one to follow up previous discussions that we had the last couple of months on the DOT grant projects, if we, where we stand on the approval to proceed with those activities. We had a conversation with Tilcon, who was awarded the co-op this year, they're already scheduling into August with their paving projects, so the more we delay, the longer, you know, the, the later in the year that we can actually get on their schedule. As we discussed before, the Willow Grove, if we don't get it under contract by November, that grant goes away. So don't need a decision tonight, but we don't want to wait too many more months, because once we get your approval, then we have to go through the survey, plan, preparation, spin the DOT, DOT approval, then we have to do a resolution to award, so there's a process there that could take, depend upon how long the DOT takes, three or four months. You back that off in November, we're not too far away from that, so I just want to kind of bring that up, that a decision will have to be made at some point. If we're gonna go forward with at least the Willow Grove, obviously, the Lowe's Hollow is, you're, you know, but we can do it at the same time.
So Bryce, before you go, we have set aside the soft clause for Willow Grove. So do we need to do something for you here tonight, or just say move forward with it?
I just need you all to say move forward.
We'll do a motion on the record.
Let's do a motion on the record. I make a motion that we move forward with the Willow Grove paving project.
Anybody want a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes. Yes.
Mister Kenneth?
I'm gonna have to stay in only because it's right across the street from where I live, so.
So we'll make sure that the driveway in question is not put back properly.
Just a little off.
Alright, appreciate that, we'll get that on our schedule to do the Willow Grove. Project and then we can discuss. The other one later on. Um. I don't see it on the agenda tonight, so maybe it's not appropriate to bring it up. There was a. Communication from Attorney Carney on the uh sewer, a resolution to authorize sewer connection for a new house on Valerie Place. Um. I'm not sure if the sewer subcommittee needs to see that first, or. What the process is on that, so.
Did, did they schedule a meeting with?
Uh, no, there's not a meeting scheduled, but I don't think. We need to meet as a sewer, uh, the, the subcommittee. Uh, well, and Brian's right here, so, and it's professionals. I mean, he's gonna put a house up there, it needs to be tied into the existing sewer system. Um, what are we?
The way it's set up right now is that the, the committee passed the resolution says that they, that they're. A person or an entity can connect to the sewer system, and they have to pay. The connection fee, which I believe is twenty four hundred dollars, and split half to Philsburg, half to Greenwood. Then there's also a. Better seven hundred and fifty dollar fee, uh, impact fee that Philsburg charges.
Alright, and, and but they are. They themselves aren't taking the cost to hook up to the system. We don't have to do any of that.
That's correct, yeah, that's actually sitting here right now, and it's the next thing I wanna talk about, so I'll wait to talk about it quick, but they're. They need to do a street opening permit as part, and, and part of that street opening permit is for. Probably Dan Madden, the sewer engineer, to look at to make sure that they're, what they're proposing as far as the connection is appropriate. But yes, they're responsible for tying into sewer line is not in front of their property, but. Accessible on an angle. They will have to cut through sidewalk curb and.
On Valerie?
On Valerie.
Okay.
Bryce, did Dan send a, a sample resolution over?
Brad did.
Brad, I'm sorry, Brad.
Yeah, it was in the email that was sent to us, yeah.
Okay.
He had set it up, so it's.
Have they finalized it? You think it's in order?
I think it's, I think it's in order, yeah.
So could we? Take action on this, Mike, provided you review that and you're comfortable with it?
Yep.
Um.
Will that be forty eight?
It would be forty eight twenty five.
Brian, what's your take on them, though?
So it's, it's um, near the corner. Uh, it was a property, there was a, it was a, there was a land swap of the township to this entity.
Yeah, we've been discussing it last couple of years.
It was an approval, subdivision approval when that whole area was put in, whatever it was, ten years ago or whatever, there was a, the corner lot, there's actually two lots there. It was, that's named for open space, and there was a land swap that was done, I don't know how many years ago now. So you'll still, the township still has a piece on the corner.
Right.
This is the next one.
What number on Valerie is that?
Am I saying the wrong thing?
No, 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 it's the best, and I was gonna add some after the.
What number on Valerie?
It's, they assign, it has been assigned one thousand four.
Okay.
That doesn't exist yet, but it, he got, he got the address.
I, I think that was the piece that we had, the, there was still, we had a conservation easement, it was never taken off, and we swapped it, and then they couldn't develop it, so then we had to take the easement off, so. Yeah, that, that's the piece.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to adopt resolution forty eight twenty five to authorize a sewer hookup at one thousand and four Valerie Place. I'll make that one. Anybody want a second?
I'll say.
Any further question, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Barsley?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenneth?
Yes.
Mister McDermott?
Yes.
So as I noted, I have some applications here that the. Uh, landlord has put out for street opening permits and driveway permit, because he's gonna put a driveway on the Valerie Place. Um. Working with this gentleman, been a little bit of a. Some trials and tribulations, I'm sure Lisa can test too. I think we've got it all figured out. One thing during this process. That I noticed in the ordinance, this is not something we're gonna take, that needs to take action tonight, and I'm. I wanna make sure that ordinance is in front of me here, so. Ordinance eleven dash one eighteen is the fees and deposits for a road, a road opening permit. That ordinance is dated nineteen seventy eight. The application fee is two dollars. So I think.
I'd just like to say I brought this up ten years ago.
Um, and the escrow is fifty, so, um. We've already spent more than that, just talking about tonight, so. That ordinance needs to be updated, I'm not sure what, which process we wanna go through to get that ordinance updated. The driveway permit is fifty and two hundred, so it's, it is better, it's still not great.
Right.
So I'm not sure what the process is to, is that something that I should? Draft up, is that something you wanna draft up or?
I think we actually have a sample, right, from a couple of years ago, you.
I think, well, to raise that, I mean, it's pretty simple, whatever the committee decides, I, I'm sure you'll give a recommendation about what that should be, and then we just do an ordinance amending the existing ordinance to say that the two dollars is now twenty five dollars and that. Uh, you know, escrow is two hundred, or whatever it is.
So I just didn't know if we wanted to review the whole ordinance, make sure there's anything else that we wanted to make sure is covered, like moratorium roads and things like that, you know, that. Beef it up to make it, you know. Stronger. I know there's not a whole lot of street opening permits staying in agreement, which I'm, I was going through our files, and I think we've done like three in the last six years.
Bryce, it didn't look, cause I feel like maybe there was a draft that was brought up several years ago.
Made, yeah, I could check.
I think you might have pulled that.
A, a lot of towns were having this trouble, not, not the two dollar situation, but you know, escrow for inspection purposes, I mean. Two hours.
We got taken up for like five, three dollars.
So I just wanted to bring that to you, everybody's attention.
I'll check too.
That we, you know, that should be looked at. Uh, last thing, uh, Mister Labor already brought up was the one four diaxane. There's obviously a process with that, you know, we'll, we'll try to take the lead on some things that need to happen, we don't wanna. Hit that right now, cause you don't have like bonded. The way that works is the D E P pays for. Pretty well, everything. Permit fees, soft costs, inspection, construction. All that is paid for under that money that's coming from the D E P, but you have to front it through your bonding.
Right.
So if we start working on it, we're gonna invoice you, then you have to pay the money, so we wanna. Make sure we're not starting too soon. The first process is. A few years ago, we looked at possible different routes to get to Mister Haggerty's property. There's gonna be possible right away negotiations involved with that, maybe some purchase of, of right away, depend upon what route we go in. Where the, the house is situated is right at the township line. So if we stay in Greenwood, we're dealing with Aqua. If we come from Franklin, we're dealing with water, American Water. So there's all kinds of nuance here to this thing, right off the bat. You know, uh, the simple thing will be it's one line. One tap into the existing system, it's gonna be a very long service line, we've dealt with that in the Franklin side, as Mister Labor mentioned. We, we have experience with. Doing this with the water company. Not necessarily Aqua, so that's gonna be the first step, is figuring out where, where the water's coming from. So, just wanted to let you know, we're, we're paying attention to it, but we don't think we wanna. Jump in and spend a bunch of money right now until you get your. The agreement signed and get the bonding set up and that sort of thing, unless you feel differently, we can start.
Well, my question is, how can we bond? Without. An estimate as to what the job is gonna cost, which means we need to identify the route. But now I'm under the.
So I'm surprised that he's saying that, aren't you? Because I thought we had to go with Aqua.
Well, I, I'm not, I kinda thought so too. The driveway to that property already has a utility easement. In it, so we shouldn't have to purchase or dicker with anything. It's already in the easement, and I know the driveway was rearranged. To benefit the easement better. So there shouldn't be any issues there, it's a matter of what's it gonna cost to come off of?
Arbor.
Arbor or the next one down? I think it's the next one down.
request Arbor, you know.
Uh, what's the one behind it? Emmeline or?
Oh, there's Robin, I think.
Yeah, but one of them.
Aqua's on both of them in the.
Yeah, right, they're gonna be on both of them, but it should be. Enter that easement. The half a mile, three quarters of a mile, whatever it is, down to that driveway and it should be done, so it should be Aqua. And it should be coming right off of the cul-de-sac, there's a driveway entrance, it's right there.
Okay.
Yeah, Bryce, maybe, maybe we should have a call, cause I think we went through all of that several years ago.
Yeah.
I think they. They worked most of those details.
Okay, and then that, that may be fine, I just. I don't have any record of, last record I have is that we were looking at three different options.
Okay.
And there was reasons why that was not one option, is the, the, that easement was kind of in question, maybe just some been some legal.
I think.
Yeah, look into that easement, see if it was actually real, and I think his driveway crosses another property, if it has the easement, then maybe we're fine, so maybe it's a lot better situation than we.
Yeah, I think it's a lot better situation.
And that, and that's wonderful, but I just didn't wanna be.
Right.
Spending a lot of time.
No.
Spending money. But if you need it, I mean, I think we got, there should be an estimate somewhere, because somehow D E P came up with that number.
Well.
They don't just pull a number out.
It's all, it's all in my file, I'll share it to you.
Okay.
Definitely.
And I'll keep digging on our files and see what I've got.
Yeah, and just as part of my review, section, section two subsection B, before work is commenced, we have to receive written authorization signed with the department's bureau chief, otherwise we will not be compensated for any work done prior to the approval. Now, I would think. As you said, you know, committee man, you know, you, you need to take a look at the design first to know exactly how much it's gonna cost, but maybe just if you have a call with them, just confirm that those soft costs will still be reimbursed. Cause like Bryce said, they reimburse everything.
Yeah, cause I thought we, we had a, a, a linear foot.
We did.
And the D E P or somebody. In the know said. It's two hundred and seventy five dollars a foot.
Right.
Times, you know, four thousand feet, and that's where we came up with the eight hundred thousand dollars of. Hard costs, it's the soft costs. That I don't know that we have a true handle on right now. But again, that was almost two, two and a quarter years ago.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
And it was a collaboration that a dollar amount per uh linear foot was between Aqua. And.
Right.
Engineer and the D E P.
So. We've all seen what's happening about the escalation stuff. So it was eight seventy five, two and a half years ago. Might be nine seventy five now.
Well, I will say that the, when the bids were done for the pieces in Franklin. The bids came in higher than the bonded money and the grant money from the D E P.
Surprise there, right?
So the D E P evaluated, they said, okay, we'll adjust the amount, but then the town's gotta go back and bond more money. So the D E P did cover the escalation, but yes, that did happen.
Right. So maybe we could just do it once instead of having to do it twice.
At the time, I think Mike thought that our estimate is high, so maybe it'll be perfect.
Yeah, maybe.
So I'll go through our files again and make, make sure I'm, I'm up to speed on where we're at, but just wanted to kind of talk about it to keep that. Conversation going, cause we don't want that to linger too long, like you said. The Franklin portion took, I've been with the company two and a half years, and it was started before I was there. So. Now, that one involved a lot more because we dealt with the railroad, we dealt with the county. American Water was difficult to deal with, so there's a lot, a lot more to that. Hopefully this will be less. Uh, that's all I have on my report, if there's, unless there's anything that you wanna bring up or discuss.
There is something I wanna discuss. Um, I know you and I talked about the ordinance for the sewer hookup and. The potential cost, but. I don't know if it's in your wheelhouse or Dan Madden's wheelhouse. I need to know. If the. The original plan that we have, cause it's all designed and done for the hamlet. Uh. What the actual cost is, is that already included, in, which we would have to put it out for bid again, but. The running of the sewer line from the main. To the property. Is, would that already be included in that? I mean, I'd like to.
I would say I'm fair, I'm fairly confident that it is not.
It's not, okay. So we need to know that number. Because that has to be budgeted into what eventually, should it go through, would be some type of bond. Uh, which, and then we'll decide by ordinance. You know, I've heard it, that if, if you have your septic system, it's older than fifteen years, you'll be required to hook up. If it's fifteen years or newer, you won't have to hook up. But we need to know per hookup. What the cost is going to be. Because that needs to be figured out, cause I kinda. And again, this is just a rough number from a. Almost eight, nine years ago. You know, it was gonna cost several thousand dollars once you got inside of the house. On the homeowner's side to hook up. But we need to know what the town's number's gonna be from the main. To the, 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 uh, the exterior wall, I'm going to assume. But somehow or another, I can't believe that it wasn't part of the original bid.
Not to hell, it's where the hookup is, right? He's not, we don't have to go to the house, I don't think.
Well, some, that, somewhere.
There's a. Connection.
Well, yeah, maybe in the sidewalk, the easement or whatever, but that's the number that we need to know.
So I would, I, I will go back and look at the original estimate, and what we talked about was the possibility of updating that estimate to make sure we understood what possibly we need to be bonded or we are what the.
Right.
Today's cost would be. Uh, we.
I mean, Dan's pretty good at figuring out those numbers, and I know that he has a copy of the old plan.
Right, I can look at it, see, it's. My belief is gonna be that the estimate definitely does not go past the, the sidewalk or the right away line, cause that's not something the town would typically.
No, exactly, but. I would like to think in that first estimate, though, that the cost of getting to the sidewalk or.
Yeah, I.
The utility easement should be there.
I can quickly look at that and, and find that answer out.
Because, again. I don't know what it was in the sewer district places, but. Twenty four hundred dollars to hook into a. Three million dollar s- sewer line project. There's, it's not gonna generate anywhere near. A small portion of the revenue that needs to be brought back in return. And I know that's part of this whole process, so.
Right, and, and just keep in mind, that sewer connection fee is established by Philsburg. Your ordinances don't have those numbers in them, your ordinance says, look at Philsburg.
Right.
Philsburg ordinance says, in Greenwood.
Well, I find that it's okay, twenty four hundred dollars just to turn it on. With the switch, it starts working. That's cool, but I need to know what the actual cost is. Uh, if it's already in the plan, or.
Okay.
If we have to add per hookup.
Okay, I will, uh. I will look at that and report back.
Alright.
That it?
Yep.
You're done, Bryce?
I'm done.
Mike, you have anything?
It's for executives.
Executives.
Okay.
Old business municipal complex update. I don't really have any, we're still waiting to hear from HUD. I would note that Congressman Kane's office has been very, uh. Much trying to assist us with HUD and Senator Steinhardt's been helping us with stateside with D C A. So, uh, both of them are working on it for us with, you know, to try to get that grant straightened out. Anything on that pavilion park policy or you ever had a meeting yet?
We're having a meeting.
And that's the new on Comcast, right?
So we received a complaint today from a resident that said they've received a, a small sinkhole establishing. Um, being the time of the year, we're gonna. Get back in touch with Comcast to start putting some pressure on them to find out number one, where, when are they gonna finish the project?
Yeah.
Um. You know.
Remember her, um, she's on Daniel, I think, and it's in an area that's screened by some orange fence right now.
Yeah.
They're familiar with wherever that is.
Yeah.
Four, four eleven Daniel. And so, obviously there's some, there's some restoration matters that need to be addressed and obviously they didn't finish the product, so.
Yeah, weren't they supposed to already be done? Cause they're not at our area. I called and they said it's not in our. Area at this time.
Yeah, I, I know the box in front of my house, they don't have any, uh.
Yesterday, they were doing aerial lines and they're still going up South Main Street. They haven't made it, um. I would say. About it, uh, Baby's Road is where they stopped, so I think they still.
Okay.
Have a lot of work, it's there. Yeah, they haven't even gotten to any of our primary area, I don't think.
As far as township roads and underground things, I think there was only the one, was it Revere? Is the only road that they have not done. But as, as the chief has said, I think there's a lot of areas that are. County roads that they have not done, which is the aerial sections or county and or aerial sections.
Okay, thank you.
That man in the park. Have you heard anything we said? Nothing, Joe hasn't made any comment. I have not walked here.
But the only comment Joe has made is he thought. There for awhile when the ground was frozen and not that it was a snowy year, there was situations where people. Weren't getting off into, not that they shouldn't be cleaning it up there either, but.
Right.
Uh, um. He's not thinking that it's a, a pressing problem at this stage in the game. But the question is have the signs been, I personally haven't gotten the feedback from anybody.
Hmm.
As to whether it's a yay or an a. No, well, we don't want dogs there or why are you kicking dogs out? I don't know about any of the other committee.
I've never heard anything.
I've got two emails from people saying thank God we put the signs up.
Ah, okay, that's good.
And my daughter and son-in-law walk there every single day. It's lessened, but people are still not picking up after their dogs right in front of them.
Right.
They're letting them go to the bathroom and they're just walking right.
So i- it's gonna come right back to that same old question. Do we penalize all dog owners because of a few?
Right.
Uh, you know, that's the decision that needs to be made. Do we wanna let it ride? One more month with the signs up? And.
I don't mind.
I'm willing to do that. I, I don't wanna take it on the table.
Right. No, no, leave it on the table. I mean, the signage is a little off, but. You know, again, if we, you know, get two emails, I, I don't know that we change anything, you know what I'm saying? Despite what it appears. Yeah, uh. Cause there's more than two people that walk dogs up there.
Right.
But you know, again, maybe the signage is helping improve the situation some. Not to mention that, that we bought seven hundred and ninety-four dollars worth of doggy bags. Into HBO. So we at least let it run out.
So. Here's a thought, maybe we can do what they do down along the shorelines. You know, from May first to October first, you ban the dogs. Then I'm coming to winter months on the beach and they're our case and be in the park. I mean, that's a thought.
Yeah. Well, but the winter seems to be when the. Incidences are at its max, so.
Right.
And that walk.
There's less people.
No, there's less people, but that walking path is still the key feature year round, so.
Right.
You know, maybe just let it ride out another month.
Oh, yeah, I would definitely let it ride.
Okay. Looking for a motion to adopt resolution forty-two, twenty-five. That's the one to refund money to a disabled vet. Who's mortgage company made his first quarter payment, so it was, they're asking for reimbursement and they're entitled to it. Can I make that motion?
No, I don't know, I'm gonna do.
Yeah. I'm looking for a motion to adopt resolution forty-three, twenty-four, which is a redemption of tax lien. Forty-four, twenty-five is a re- uh, redemption of tax lien. And forty-five, twenty-five, it is a pavilion rental fee, I guess you need a mix-up. The woman. Came into reserve it for April twelfth, then we discovered that there was April twelfth mistaken, so that we're gonna refund her her two hundred and fifty dollar deposit. Looking for a motion to adopt those for resolutions. I'll make that move. Wait one second.
Sorry.
Any further questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenick?
Yes.
And Miss McDermott?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to adopt resolution forty-six, twenty-five, which is a calendar rapid for the Historical Society and I'll make that motion. Anybody want a second? That's it. Anybody have any questions or comments? Roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenick?
Yes.
Miss McDermott?
I think I have to abstain, cause I am on the Historical Society. What?
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah.
I, we got enough votes, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah.
Looking for a motion for resolution forty-seven, twenty-five for a D C A grant of one hundred thousand dollars for a running heart park.
I'll second.
Any other questions, comments on that? Roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenick?
Yes.
Miss McDermott?
Yes.
Uh, looking for a motion to. Introduce ordinance number one oh one, twenty, twenty-five in order to the township agreement authorizing acceptance of a conservation easement from Greenwich. Dumont Urban Renewal Associates LLC to the Township of Greenwich for the preservation and conservation of land located at block twenty-six, lot two.
I'll make that one. Um, mayor, I apologize. Um, I put this down and my notice not very obvious, but, um, we need to have the, hold the second reading. It, we introduced last month.
Oh, it's the second reading?
Um, we have to hold it because the publication didn't go through properly.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Looking for a motion to open public hearing on ordinance number one oh three, twenty, twenty-five. Anybody make that motion? I'll second it. Anybody from the public wishing to come up and make any comments regarding that ordinance introduction? I'll make a motion that we close.
Second.
All favor?
Alright.
Hi.
Uh. Looking for a motion to adopt the ordinance number one oh three, twenty, twenty-five.
I'll make that motion.
I'm, I'm reading the wrong one, huh? It's one oh one.
Yes.
I'm sorry. One, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the ordinance one oh one, twenty, twenty-five.
I'll make the motion.
One second. Any other questions? Roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenick?
Yes.
Miss McDermott?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to introduce ordinance number one oh two, twenty, twenty-five, which is the call of ordinance for the budget. Anybody wanna make that motion?
I'll make the motions.
I'll, I'll second. Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenick?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to introduce the annual budget and taxes of the township agreement for fiscal year twenty, twenty-five. Anybody wanna make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Anybody want a second? I'll second. Any questions, comments on it? Roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenick?
Yes.
Miss McDermott?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to introduce ordinance number one oh three, twenty, twenty-five, nor into the township of Greenwich amending chapter sixteen zoning permitted. Uses that electronic data processing facilities to list the principal permitted uses in the area zone. Anybody wanna make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Any questions, comments?
Just to typo, um, in the first bold paragraph, it's just to add electronic data processing. Just change the thing to data. At least that's on my copy. Right here?
Oh, you're looking at the, yeah.
The actual, okay, yeah. You gotta listen to.
Yeah, it's okay everywhere else.
Yeah, I, yeah, I looked everywhere else. I'm like, is it right? You know, but yeah, we're talking about data centers, yeah.
Okay, I will, um. Correctly send back to John. Okay. Um. Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenick?
Yes.
Miss McDermott?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to introduce ordinance number one oh four, twenty, twenty-five, nor it's amending smoke alarm certifications.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenick?
Yes.
Miss McDermott?
Yes.
Discussion on the proposed, proposed ordinance to prohibit smoking in township plus. We talked about that last month, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I, I think it was my understanding that we already had such an ordinance, but I checked the code and couldn't find it, so.
Oh, wow.
We drafted one. And it bans, cause I think the discussion was, you know, we banned smoking, but we wanted to also include cannabis in that of, of a property, so.
Yeah, really, who's come up because of the cannabis.
Yes, that's my, so it bans, uh, tobacco, cannabis, chewing tobacco on.
Vapes.
Vapes, I think is included in that as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So next month we have a ordinance?
Yeah.
Can we introduce?
Everybody in favor of that? Everybody want, I want the ordinance, I don't wanna pay them if we're not gonna pay.
We, um, we can introduce it tonight if you want. I mean, it's, it's ready to go.
Forty-nine?
Uh, it'll be, um, one oh five, twenty, twenty-five.
One oh five.
Oh, it's an ordinance, okay, yeah, my, my mistake.
One oh five, twenty, twenty-five.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Any questions, comments? That motion is for one oh five, twenty-five for the prohibition of smoking, uh.
Yeah, babe.
Related products. Of public parks, so roll call.
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yeah.
Mister Bean?
Uh, yes.
Mister Kenick?
Yes.
Miss McDermott?
Yes.
Another problem for you, chief. You'll be getting pulled out there for soccer games, cause you know, there's gonna be parents who are gonna stand.
Do something to say. Everybody gets in.
Good point.
Okay. Solicitor for Sky Light Roofing, Pablo Plateo and his father's play low, anybody, uh. Wanna make a motion to?
I'll make the motion.
Award it? If you've got a motion, anybody want a second? What, what do they do? Skylight roofing, siding and solar panels? They're not a local company, right?
Well.
Mm-hmm.
Didn't we, I mean, didn't we say, didn't we say last month that we're only gonna do residents?
Well, we said something about that, but I know I said I had a line in the sand that. You know, that I, uh, were allowing too much to begin with and.
Well, we have a motion, we don't have.
Right, we have a second. We got one guy from Phyllisburg, one guy from Keyport, so.
I think the company's actually kinda local. Oh, no, the business address is Princeton.
Yeah.
And, uh. Uh. Oh, but he live, oh, yeah, well, yeah, no, no, I can't.
No, no.
Second, no second, right? Wasn't gonna go the fastest. Looking for a motion for, uh, towards listening permit to Trinity Solar. Same situation, the company's from Allen, Lea, and Wall Township and the salesman's from Eastern.
No.
Anybody wanna make a motion? Okay. Tree policy, we've talked about that in public, you wanna do that in?
Yeah, I, I think we already know our direct, it's, uh, Wade's working on that now, so that you guys have a concise thing. We've done a memo on it. And then I think what the committee had asked for was like a concise thing that we can tell, you know, if anybody asks what the.
I mean, I have one, one woman who wants a, a legitimate answer. Last I spoke to her, she's just. It's been an ongoing problem. I'll tell you what, this tree situation is not going away. Since it's come up. Here so many times with, between Jason, P and L, Paul, I've been on meetings for that. And if you read the paper, how many are falling on cars?
Yeah.
And Paul pointed out to me, now I pay attention. You ever look at, these trees are dead right next to these roads, like, and they're leaning and stuff. I was coming back from Atlantic City like a month ago. Uh, up on two oh six, there's limbs already on the power lines. Lean in the stuff. I mean, that's, it's gonna be a problem for years.
Years.
Across the street from me too, the dead trees are leaning right on me.
Like the one that you're working on on this. One that also requires if you take down a healthy tree, you have to plant healthy trees depending on.
No, 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 this is just taking our memo that we did about who's responsible for the trees and just boiling it down. So it's like, here's a concise statement of what. Our responsibility or responsibility is not.
D P W some direction on how to handle.
I was just gonna ask, we have the D P W doing at least a monthly patrol of.
No, I mean, as far as if somebody's tree falls in the street. Our policy has always been to just.
Give it back.
On their property.
Right, right.
Kind of that.
Right.
So that's what we're gonna talk about in executives. I see you giving me the lock. You should know better.
You gotta walk on the edge. Expert.
Okay. Uh. I guess we're looking. Anybody have any questions on the letters later written? And that executives as well, okay, um. Move public comment in front of the executive for that, okay with everybody? So I'll make a motion, we'll open public comment.
Second?
All favor?
Alright.
Anyone wishing to come up to the podium? Address the committee? We usually stay around three minutes.
True. Sure. Uh, my name is Neil Morkov. Yes. You can stand some.
No, we're not quoting him there.
Oh, sorry.
That's good, no problem.
That's better?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, I'm a resident of Greenwich Township along, live along seventy-three. I attended the Muscaton River Management Council a couple nights ago. I was a guest, but I was also there with the general public. They were commenting regarding the PFAS contamination that has occurred, uh, in. Uh, the township of, uh, Washington. As a result of, uh, waste, uh, from a manufacturing company in the nineteen fifty's, nineteen seventies that were being spread on. On, uh, uh, fields, farm fields and soil advances. That's now a big problem, uh, that's been handled by the D E P. The Muscaton Walk Association have been doing their own testing in addition to the D E P. And, uh, they showed a map showing contamination levels. Uh, I was able to get a copy of that presentation today. And it appears that the contamination, uh, seems to be large in southeast to the southwest. That contamination is continuing in that direction. So that includes, and on that map. A level that's not particularly good for PFAS wrapping around Bloom Street Township. Who's your bar, I apologize. I'm in a well. I'd like to know if I should be concerned about PFAS contamination in that well and who I should be talking about it.
I live down there.
So now you got me interested.
Me too.
Um. I don't know, I guess it's up to where I have to, uh. It's a deep danger.
Yeah.
I'm unaware until you bring it up tonight.
What, what is the contaminant? Wait, I, I think.
PFAS.
To pick forever chemicals.
Yes, correct, yeah.
So the issue here is, is that the New Jersey in two thousand and eighteen actually was one of the first states to implement, um, levels. Limits in terms of drinking water. The state then actually came out with a interestingly a more strict limit. I believe that was last year or the year before, so the New Jersey level is around about fourteen P P T. The federal level is like, yeah. The problem here is that the measurements from N W A are totally P plus, whereas the actual levels that are required, the actual regulatory levels. Are based on about five subclasses of chemicals depending on what type it is. At the moment, I'm not exactly clear what that means, but definitely in terms of that incident. There is definitely evidence that it's moved south. West and it is potentially impacting at least around Bloom Street Barrow.
Okay, thanks for that. We'll look into that.
Uh, Bryce, isn't that the containment it's that Franklin Township is working on now?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not, no, that was from American Can.
That was not.
I think it's.
So the water line project you're talking about?
Yes.
That's related to one for dioxin.
Dioxin.
Oh.
And that was from, was that from the old American Can?
Yeah.
This one, this one I have some familiarity with, cause I represent Washington Township, so the EPA is in there now, so they've kinda taken over for the D E P on that, so. They actually have an office set up in the Recreation Building in Washington Township, so.
We get a letter sent to them telling them that we're concerned or?
Yeah, I would just ask them and then see if, because. I could just tell you, this is public, because this is public knowledge, at least there at their township meetings, that I wasn't, I didn't hear anything that said that they knew where it was migrating or, you know. I, I, I don't have any reason to, to, you know, not believe what you said, but I'm not aware of that, but I do know that it's serious enough where the EPA has come in. it's serious enough where the EPA has come in. And they've been there for a couple of weeks now. Like I said, they've got an office set up at the Washington Township Recreation Building, and I know they've been doing testing. D E P's been doing testing at this one particular location for probably, I'm gonna guess, two years maybe now. And I know the town's running a water line through there.
I assume the Musk and that column will send their report to the D E P too, but maybe we should get that and send it ourselves.
Right. So I would just, you know, ask them to see the maps and whatever other testing they have to see what, if any issue, you know, we have that's migrating this way. But there, uh, this gentleman's absolutely right. Like, this was a chemical that there was a, a factory there that dumped, you know, this on his fertilizer, I guess, on these fields. And it's, it is what it is. So but like I said, I don't know how long the EPA is gonna be there, but it's a serious, uh, issue, because they wouldn't be up here if it was. Mike is, uh, do they currently have test wells for this too? Because I know there's test wells all around us. Yeah, I'm gonna probably say all for, but the, the I don't know if they've dug test wells. I know that, because the EPA has only been up here for the last couple of months. This was just a newer thing. But I know the D E P, uh, has been sampling, you know, different neighborhoods. And then as they find something, they kind of work their way out. And I, my understanding was, I think they had a handle on what the cause was, like, who did it, whatever else. And now they're just looking for the extent of it. And then like I said, the EPA came in, probably a couple, within the last couple of months. Um, and then, you know, I don't know what impact was having on the federal level is gonna have with regard to the EPA, but um, but yeah, so there's definitely an issue. I didn't hear anything about it migrating anywhere that they had, but we should probably send a letter to the D E P and maybe the EPA, and then see if we can get a handle on the map that Muscaton Con had.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
I've actually sent this to Bob already, so I'm not sure if that was the correct thing to do, but I'm certainly forward to anybody else as well.
Sure make sure it gets to Mike.
So the migration, it seems like that area of the county is migrating this way, because that was the problem with Case Center. It was up in the Washington Township, a little north. And there's a big offer underneath the ground. So if it's coming southwest, it's heading our way. So
The hydrology of this contamination is, has been established. They know where it's going. It's just time before it gets here.
Right.
And what I, we brought this up at the Environmental Commission, that we would like to see test results from test wells that are encircling our community to ensure that it's not here. And, uh, you, the fact that it's not here now doesn't mean it won't be here ten years from now.
Right.
And it is all, and I don't think they know the extent to the concentration of the chemicals that are in the ground, but this is from a textile company that was probably put in Scotchgard in the ground. Because that's what was, that's what's used on fabrics to make them stain resistant.
Yeah.
And to some extent, water resistant. So I, I, I think if we're gonna get it, you're gonna be drinking these chemicals at some point. But I must say that no one's established a clinical connection between exposure to these chemicals in your drinking water and health. And it's all over the place. I don't suggest that we drink it, but you do have Teflon implants that are used surgically. And they've been used for years that don't lead to any problems. So I don't know, it, it, it may sound like a contradiction that the fact that there's a chemical in the water and they said, what is it seventeen trillion parts per million or something like that?
The limits for the New Jersey states is around about fourteen parts per trillion. The, uh, federal level is down to four. And I should also point out that the level that they found at, at this one well that was close to this in Washington Township was the highest they've ever seen.
Well, I'm sure it is, because it stays, it stays where it is and migrate, it's not very soluble. With that way, so it's not gonna go far in water and there's the concentration in water. But when you start talking about seventeen parts per trillion, twenty parts per trillion, I would challenge the idea that they can actually measure it. Um, and, uh, and I was in that business. So I know that when you're looking at pesticides, they get down to parts per billion and it's very difficult. So I, 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 I would really like to see from a standpoint of the Environmental Commission, that we have a monitoring capability in this town that protects us. So we don't wake up one day and know that twelve, the last twelve years we've been drinking Scotchgard or whatever is in the water.
Thanks, Bob. Thank you again. Anyone else wanna come and make a public comment? And what I, I related to this. Yeah, yeah, we're, yeah, we're
My name's Henry Reewards. I just wanted to thank, uh, Mr. Mayor and the council and the staff for writing a very supportive letter to the S A D C.
No problem. That, that to me seems like a no brainer. Anyone else?
The generals comments?
Yes.
I, I would like to.
Yes.
Very quickly, uh, make some comments, uh, as it relates to the historical commission. And as a commission, we became, we became aware of, of the, uh, potential of demolishing the house at the proposed warehouse mine, like manufacturing site. And that this house is a, uh, historical site. It, uh, it's been cited and, and I, I have to get my glasses. I'm sorry. I can't see a damn thing. I lost my glasses.
I can't see them.
I keep saying I'm gonna give a spare pair for you.
Yes.
There we go.
Gotta get one of them chains around your neck.
Borrow bills.
You know what happens, I bend over to wash my hands and then I rip them off my neck on the faucet. The house in question, um, they expected the mid nineteenth century. This is, this is that house. It's there now. It's been a little bit modified. It, it was assessed by the state of New Jersey uh, sometime back, a few years back, uh, was, what was it, nineteen ninety three? In the state historical preservation office determined that in nineteen ninety three, that it was an eligible structure due to its significance as an impressive Georgian style dwelling. And that's quoted from their report. One of the unique things that we have going for the town is that if you take Route one seventy three, I mean, and you take a look on this map here from eighteen sixty, many, most of those houses are still there. And they reflect the architecture of the time and, and they have, they have a, an aesthetic value. And then we feel they should be protected. So far, we've lost the Boris Farmhouse and the tavern where Wendy's is.
Yeah.
What we'd look as a historical commission, what we're recommending is that the, at the town looked at ordinances that would inhibit the demolition of historical houses or houses that have a particular architectural significance. And it, they could, that could take any, any form. I'm aware of a town where if you have a house that their historical commission objects to being torn down, it doesn't get torn down no matter how many times you saw. So it, it's something to consider. It, it provides the town with a character to have a historical, um, I'll use the word loosely district. And our whole southern end of the town is, is covered in historic sites. And there are many homes that are, have been around here since the time of the revolution or before. So that's, that's basically our, our, our concern, is that we're gonna lose our character if we indiscriminately get rid of all of our historic architecture. And we've got, uh, there's, there's this whole, the whole book right here. There's a whole section of Greenwich Township that has many historic sites in it that date back to our founders, people who actually established this community. And the names like Pulsizer and Shimer and Fulmer Stone, they're, they're all there. And their houses are still here. You got Stone's General Store up the street. You got Stone's Funeral Home down the street. You got, you got a hotel on the corner where Thomas Edison might have been. Well, not that he might have, but he actually spent his nights there when he went to visit his, uh, factory in Broadway. So it, it's just a plea from the historical commission to say can we start considering the nature of our historical architecture in our town? And do something about indiscriminate demolition of that architecture.
Thanks, Mr. Wright. Anyone else?
Did, do you have any questions about my monthly report or book to you or?
No. Uh, I said, no, right? Everybody said, yeah, yeah, okay. Uh, I'll make a motion. Should we close public comment?
A second.
All in favor? Like, how hard would it be to look in? Are you familiar with these types of historic?
Yeah. So you know, we'll have to take, it's probably something we should also refer to the Land Use Board for consideration, you know, before we, but yeah, you could create historic districts and then, you know, you'd have to delineate where they are. Um, so I, I could look into it. But like I said, the Land Use Board may wanna have something to say about it. They, they consider this area, um, around the canal. I think it's that way.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
Around the canal, that, that, that already had, if you looked on some maps that we saw when they were, they wanted to put a solar farm up in back here. That is delineated by the state as being a historic.
Yeah.
Maybe not a district, but that I don't think we're asking for a historic
We're not gonna go do a district, because it's too spread out all around it.
Yeah. We're asking for some means of controlling indiscriminate demolition of houses that are deemed worthy of that because of their historical connection to the past.
So Mike, you can get a some information?
Yeah.
For this? See how hard or difficult whatever would be. Okay. Anybody have anything else before we go into executives? Okay. I'll make a motion. We go into executive session for personnel discussion.
A second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Thanks for coming, everyone. I'll make a motion to go back into public session. I'll give you one second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Alright.
Mike? Yes, Mayor, we emerged from executive session at eight oh five P M, where we discussed, uh, two personnel matters dealing with retirement payouts and vacation accrual. And one, uh, pending litigation matter dealing with the Reeveard driveway. No official action was taken, except for these minutes will be available at such time as the committee determines there is no harm to the public interest.
I'll make a motion to authorize the chief of police to take action as discussed in executive session. Anybody want a second? Any questions, comments, roll call?
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Hi.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Kinnick?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Looking for a motion to authorize the attorney to take action as discussed in executive session?
A second.
I'll let, your motion?
I'll make the motion.
Go on.
Got a motion in a second? Any questions, comments, roll call?
Mayor Barsney?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Mr. Kinnick?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Anybody have anything else that wanna bring up?
Yeah, real, uh, try not to make this lengthy. I just thought about it, yeah. We need to, uh, we're, we're, the Land Use Board is gonna be at the school for at least the next two to three months. I don't see this happening in any time quicker than that, and I don't see the public becoming disinterested. We have to do a slightly better job of being able to project the meeting uh, from where we are. As it was last week, whether it was the applicant or the resident speaking, everybody had to remember to keep the mic perpendicular, this, that, and everything. So it'd be much easier on a stand. So I think the school could use two stands, uh, one for the applicants in there. And we were passing around a microphone on the day, well, this one was on a stand, the other two were handhelds. Um, we were passing it around, you know, uh, Mark Scary started with it, passed it to John Drew, who then two over to Kendra, back to Bryce, over to Mark Scary, and this and that. And we, as the Land Use Board, hasn't even begun to ask our questions yet, and we were five tables wide. You know, there was fourteen of us. That, that one handheld mic on this small stand is gonna be a challenge to move it all around. When you agree with that, chief, you were there, right? So I would ask Lisa to reach out to Tina, and I don't know whether we communicated yet
We did.
about buying two microphone stands and a couple of table stands, uh, which they would have to have microphones, which would improve their meetings also. Um, but for the next three months, it would improve our meetings. And the reality of it is, and I know money's tight and everything, but the applicants contributed, well, their application fee was huge.
Right.
You know, and I know that it kind of got mixed into paying bills last year kind of thing, right? Sort of.
It's, it went to general.
Right, right. It went to general. Um, but it's not kind of there either, but I, I don't know what this is gonna cost. I don't think it's substantial.
So my email correspondence was with Lisa, I can't remember her last name, Hervor Hervan, uh, at the school, asking if they have it anywhere else in the school. Because there was some discussion that they do have some stands available, possibly in other departments. So I started there and I haven't even, um,
Okay. So the point being is, if we can't do that
Use them, right?
we, we need to purchase this and leave it behind. And we're not taking it. We're gonna leave it behind. Because I gotta believe in the next couple of years, especially without affordable housing, we're going back, you know, to meetings in the school.
Right.
So, uh, I, I just assume, let's get it all taken care of now.
They desperately need it, because when I'm at their school board meetings and there's three people in the audience, I'm like less than ten feet away from their desk. And I still can't hear.
Right.
You know, if it was in the library, that's one thing, we can hear it. But when you're in that wide open
Right.
can't. So, so I talked to a neighbor of mine who is in the business, like hotel management, and he does, uh, engineering for sound system. He said, you need these type of mics going into a mixer, which will then go by wifi into their system. So John Paul? Is he, you're gonna need, you're gonna need at least two of those at each of
Two more, right, right.
So I'm thinking like seven or eight of those just for the land use board. And these things can't be that expensive.
Yeah, again, I don't know the cost. I'm not trying to overdo it.
And have John Paul try to figure it out, you know?
Well, I, I'm not familiar with the equipment that they have, but we have
They got nothing.
We have six of these mics. I just don't know, like, that those would work up the, you know, same connection.
So, but anyway, I just, we have to do something. I, I'm not saying we had complaints or anything. I just found to be very cumbersome to be dealing all of that.
Yeah, a lot of wasted time.
Lot of wasted time, a lot of wasted time. You know, and then you get somebody who's down here thinking that they're the singer and the poor court stenographer got nothing but echo, you know, and things like John Drew. You know, so i- i- it was, it was brutal.
Okay, so Lisa, you wanna work on that? Looking for a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Have a nice holiday.
Happy Easter.